Okay. All right, they stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, also gonna read our mission statement and part mission communities, the mission that goes then involve school district is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect. So they become self-directed, responsible lifelong. All right, roll call, all board members are present. As well as Superintendent Hunstead, um Carter, community director, Tracy Tolson, and Brooke Belka from the district. You have any changes to the agenda?
No, if you notice, we said when you went out this morning and nothing. Set's got.
Okay. We have a motion.
A vote.
Motion by Nicole, is there a second? Second by Laura, all those in favor say aye.
I opposed.
Public comments, verbal recognition, I don't think anybody's talking. Verbal recognition.
I think a shout out to all the teachers as we close out the year in the crazy warm temperatures, I would assume going to bring the excitement and um energy levels up slightly in the classroom.
It's sweet, yes. Yeah, it feels like the end and like you said, it's a Monday and it's felt, yeah, they're excited to be done and ready to be done and so, yeah. It's a management week for sure. Um Sappho team, I think, has their first run on the playoffs.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, um section or the track, I think you're in Rosa. Oh, I sent it later this week.
McOman. Oh.
On Thursday.
And then baseball, they have to be starting pretty soon.
Baseball plays today and their next week, I think, is their playoffs start. Track was intercepted with Rosa, they had something that subsections until Thursday and then Rosa has sections. Oh, that's what it, okay, no, that's what it was, so I have to, Katie had some questions about that that I heard that you're gonna talk about with Pratt, but yeah.
Yeah, I thought prom went really well, um and then it was lots of plenty of seating and I mean, the gym was full. I mean, it was nice to see that many people that were out and I think there was more couples than they had last year, so that was good to see good participation with kids, so. Always a good time.
Yeah, we have Special Olympics um on Thursday. Right, yeah, that was good, we went over there and they all got fired up and got started, so that's awesome.
Were you able to do volunteer this year?
I was not able to, I had to be co-star before.
Oh, okay. No, you like that, so, no, that's awesome, um yeah, well, good luck to everybody finishing the end of the school year.
I, I got one too.
Yeah.
Um, the little kids had fun in the Sunday and still work and
The track and field.
And track and field out here. And I put a ton of work for, I suppose, people who put it on, now the teachers supervising, and I think they had high school, not sure if it was like, um.
The track kids were out at the track and field.
Yeah, and then they had some maybe student council kids or someone helping with fun in the Sunday too, and it was fun seeing like the older kids interact with the younger kids, so that was nice.
And super well organized, I, yeah, amazing. Ran into a teacher while looking for my kid and she's like, do you know where you're going? Nope, just gonna wander, she's like, oh, here. She's in the small gym, you'll be there until ten forty-five, and I was like. Amazing, and she was there.
And it was good weather, it was good weather?
No, it was normal.
Track and field was really good, I was.
It was raining and cold, and then at four o'clock, it was beautiful and sunny and happy. So, extra special thank you for everyone putting up with the weather. But one of the things, winter jackets on, yeah, winter coats, hats, mittens.
Yeah, yeah, we just need you.
Kids have fun, so, yeah.
Good, all matters.
There.
All right, let's move on to reports, six point one, board committee reports, policy committee. I think you said.
Um, of all the policies, I think we're reading tonight too, we didn't have any concerns or questions with the changes, everything was very minor.
The only one that we changed, Brittany, um or for tonight, you notice, we took the four twenty-five out just because I did meet with the admin about it. I'm just not settled on exactly how we want to tweak it and who's gonna be on that team. There's talk about the site teams have done, uh so I just need a little more time to work with them and exactly. Four twenty-five is staff development, I think. So we have to have a staff.
Yeah.
The committee. Yeah, and then making the plan, and there isn't a plan right now, so that's what we need to work through, and I just have it at the back. Um, yeah, um, two really fine lines, it's not ready to be passed a second reading, or second reading, is it, so?
And then the only other, like, big change was um, the one where we went from approving things twice a year to changing it to three times.
Yeah, and I shared that with you guys, shared that weekly update that we're gonna do July, October, and January or December, January.
Yeah, just more opportunity to get it.
Tournament.
Tournament.
Yeah, so, yeah, and I did share that with the principals and Katie for the activities, so those people for next fall. Yeah, for fundraising, sorry, thank you, Brittany, um, so for next year, so they can be organized and ready for the fall, so, yeah.
Uh, D L T committee.
Uh, yep, well, that we left last week and everybody came to the meeting with like their top five priorities of what they feel D G F should address. Um, so we've split up into a bunch of different groups and then everyone made a list and then we you know, kind of for each table and just kind of saw the common threads and, and then I I know it was shared by you and we're voting on it.
Um, the H, the June H.
Okay.
Yep. Were you getting, was everybody able to open that? To see those posts, and what we did, so Brooke and I took to Laura's point, all of our, every group did it, and then we took those that were the same, so we just rewrote them. Uh, so it was on four sheets instead of, what was there, six groups, I think we had that day. Um, so any duplication, we cleaned that up, and so what you have there is all the different thoughts or priorities that people had in that from that group, so, yeah.
Okay, any questions, anybody?
All right, Superintendent report.
Yeah, graduation this week, so obviously Friday night, and David, let's see, you'll be there. I talked to Joe briefly this afternoon, there is a practice Wednesday morning, ten or ten thirty. Um, just to go through the program and hopefully so we'll have the seniors walk through and whatnot. Um, but you guys will be doing the diploma, so I'll be up there, I think he did share with me that he talked to you guys maybe four thirty Friday.
Yeah, I emailed him, I put you on the email, he's not at four thirty, and I just told him after they figure out their system to the list and we're, we need to line up.
Yeah, yeah, so after Wednesday, practice in the morning, I think he'll reach out, so, yep, so obviously a big day on Friday night for that or Friday evening. Um, school video, I shared this in the email, um, see you guys last Friday, Chad Cool here tomorrow. Um, to, he's gonna be at the elementary in the morning, he's gonna walk around, I shared, could you open the video that I shared if you guys had a chance, uh what he did in Pillager? Okay.
I was.
Yeah, within the link, is it, so maybe.
I didn't have a, had a chance to look.
Okay.
But I can't see the.
It is a link there, so anyway, click on it, that's what he did there, uh I Chad's wife, I think I shared with you, she's an eighty-seven grad from Delaware, she graduated from Holy. Um, anyway, he was a D A Y before, so he's a professional. And he's just done a really nice job. That's, I know very well from Pillager, because his kids went to school there and I worked with them out there. Uh, so he'll be here tomorrow, takes him, tomorrow is just gonna be a lot of pictures and it's gonna be again, elementary in the morning, high school most of the morning in the afternoon. Uh, then he's gonna come back a week later to interview people. Admin team and so on, and uh we're trying to get a couple of teachers from each site, so you can do that. And then he's gonna put a story together, so we're trying to think about what that story is. Um, we have some great tradition at D G F, we also have a lot of new, so what is the theme or what's the story on the videos, is it tradition meets new opportunities, so we're trying to think about that theme, and he wants to make sure that even in a five-minute video, should have an outline and a story, so. Um, so interesting, so we're gonna work through that, he's gonna obviously give it to us and we're gonna prove everything. If my interview is not good, David's is better or whatever, but, um, so if you, Rick, if you remember from my email, possibly a board member too. You know, if he would like to interview you guys, or if there's one of you to be, to be interviewed. Um, so just throwing it out there, he's gonna be back, um, I believe it's the thirtieth or thirty-first that I can, so I'll find out tomorrow for sure. Uh, that's the day he wants to do one of those interview things, uh, cause now it's more try to get kids and and I'd have it ready by later this summer. So if people move to town, should check out schools, that'd be one of the first things on our website, so click on the video. That's the, yeah, so it's, I'm excited, uh, we'll talk about the budget, but that the, the money it's gonna cost this is, is very minimal, so, yeah. So that's good and exciting. Pup, 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 um, insurance update. I do have it with me, so we'll talk about tonight in the budget committee meeting, it's an increase of thirteen thousand. But thirteen thousand four twenty-six is the increase. But our property increased just that piece of our property, now that we have the new square footage and all that, that was actually thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy of it. So in other areas, we saved money, is what I'm trying to tell you, okay? Um, it's getting it to where it should be, there was a couple of trailers missing, there was, so it was just a real good review, and uh after all of that um, the increase total was a little over thirteen. Um, I wanted to visit with the budget committee, cause we do have a few choices, as I shared in the email too, both cyber security and there's some costs there, but then we can also play with some other uh deductibles, so I want to show you tonight, he's got it kind of broken down, you know, kind of an a la carte, if you want this, and here's another way to save, or you could spend more money or whatever, so he kind of broke it down nice, we don't have to make any final decision till June fifteenth, so we have a little time. But it's in that, so I'll share that tonight, uh budget committee meetings. State legislative update. That's this little handy dandy handout. This is the education bill. Um, but there's a little summary page here too, and it makes it a, there's the Cliff Notes version, it's the first five pages, um. A lot happening in education, um, some very good and some challenges, um. One of them, like I shared in the email, is the unemployment, uh, the state is supposed to be funding that. Um, I have an M S B on Thursday morning at ten, has got a, a webinar on summer unemployment insurance in Minnesota schools, so they're gonna be covering how you get this all turned in, so the state does reimburse us and pay for that. Um, haven't heard anything yet from our, our current staff, but it goes into effect May twenty-eighth, so effectively immediately, basically. So no planning time for schools, which is unfortunate, so we just need to make sure our parents are gonna work for rebel success. Are they gonna work for E S Y? Are they gonna do food service, we have a summer feeding program? We need employees, so. I don't know, find out. Governor hasn't signed it yet, so that's, there's nothing official until he does, so.
Employees. Get up to work, I mean, the idea is that you're unemployed.
Yep, so there's, this is this, this is, well, it's part of this whole interpretation too, like how do you qualify, how, what, what's a qualifying situation, if you will, so that's why I need to be a part of this too, to find out, okay. How does that affect our employees, our parents, our, you know, all of our non-certified, and what's it look like, and do we have any? I don't know, you know, feet to stand on, and what is that, and we want to treat our employees well and right and correct, but we also need them, so. I don't know, it's the challenges of change, right? And, and not knowing and having all the answers yet, so that's what that process will be. Um, so, yeah, again, there's a, there's a ton of stuff, what I would say, uh, with, with this proposal, the state is looking just to give you a ballpark. Um, the funding for D G F schools will be about six hundred and eighty dollars than A P U, adjusted pupil unit, so remember, high school kids are weighted at one point two for twenty-four for F Y twenty-two or twenty-four, F Y twenty-five or fiscal year twenty-five is eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars a student we would be getting per that legislation, so. Nice increases, that does include the cross subsidy for special ed, that does include the formula, includes some, just all these other little E L L, uh, African Indian, uh, grants, um, just a bunch of all that stuff, so when it's all said and done, uh, that's, that's our number. Six eighty for next year and eight seventy-seven for the following, as long as everything holds true, which sounds like the governor will. Yes, there's some numbers for you, and of course, I have more information, I've got breakdowns of all kinds of stuff and requirements, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of little requirements that schools have to provide, so I can get into that later if you have questions, um, construction update. Um, we are just basically on the punch list at all sites, this one is pretty much wrapped up, like I told you guys, it's spare room now. Uh, met with the gym floor people, right, I shared that, didn't I? Okay, yeah, um, so nothing back from him, he was supposed to share it on Friday, haven't heard, so and today I just didn't get a chance to talk to, to Jeff really at all about that or Chuck, so. Um, we're still working through exactly what they're gonna cover and take care of on that end, the mistakes and things we've had happen. Um, otherwise punch list, there were two, we got access Friday, uh, state inspector was there in music room, so they can start moving all their stuff in this week to get in there, that's nice, and before the end of the year, they can get moved in, so next year they can start fashion their room. Same at the media center, that's all open, he's approved all that, um, access, so, yeah. Uh, those are, now it's just some punchless things, I mean, we've got a little mockboard here that's missing, we put some paint there, we got a corner that's not, you know awesome door handle situations, just gonna, yeah. So we're getting very close, and tonight our, um, budget committee meeting too, will talk about the construction budget, which is also in a good place, so I'll share that, so. Yeah. All right, yeah, questions for me?
Thank you, lots of shit. Period, uh, let's move on to seven point one, regular meeting of May eight, we have a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Amy, is there a second? Second by David, all those in favor say aye. Opposed. Incent agenda, Laura, claims and accounts.
Seven hundred sixty thousand two hundred twenty-three dollars and eleven cents.
Also including your packet is, um, your treasurer's monthly budget report. Proven the resignations of Todd, Todd Ferguson, middle school math, effective the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, for the resignation of Mars Marcia Olson, her professional effective May ninth. For the resignation of Kelly Thompson, food service effective May twelfth. For the resignation of Mary Morland, her professional effective the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. For the resignation of Anna Knudsen, high school, social studies teacher, effective the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And approve the resignation of Barb Johnson, food services, that effectively ended twenty-two, twenty-three. We have a motion. So, motion by Nicole, is there a second? Second by Mike, any questions or discussion? Hearing no questions or discussion, all those in favor say aye.
I.
Opposed. All right, new and unfinished business. Um, nine point one, this is the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Minnesota High School League Resolution for Membership, this is, was something we do annually. Do you have to read the resolution?
Um, I don't have it.
So this year they did it way different.
Oh, okay.
A few little hoops that we've been jumping through, did you get it back this afternoon?
I did.
Okay.
Yep.
Cause there was some docu-sign, they sent it through a docu-sign, we signed this. Anyway, so I went in there, thought it was done, and then you weren't getting it, and so it was like, why isn't Amy getting it, then they sent something back that I had to sign uh for both schools, like middle school, and so then I did that today, and then I had to have Katie fill in all the all the representatives, like the boy representative, the board representative, da, 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 da. So she did that this afternoon here, and then it was supposed to go to you, so did you get it then?
Yep, I did get it.
Okay.
Yep.
And so, okay, maybe we are okay then, did you, did you have a chance to go through and sign it too?
No, not yet, I was.
Okay. Yeah, perfect, yeah.
So, okay.
All right, is there anything to read for it?
No, there is not.
I don't think so.
Okay. So, so we're gonna do a resolution for our memberships, so it'll be a roll call vote. Uh, I'm assuming you guys know, did you read through it, is there any logistical changes or fees changing or? Anything, I'm sure the fees went up a little bit, they seem to every year, like everything else, but.
Well, it was jumping through hoops so much with the docu-sign, and then it just flips you through it, you hit it, and it takes it to the bottom, so. Um, I didn't, I, I didn't have anything that I noticed, but I did read it super extensively, Katie, then when I talked to her, she didn't share anything either, did you see anything? Um, yeah, I, I really.
I trust that it's, you know, culture, I mean, we've been doing it every year, but just, you know, I was curious how much, how much they're trying to get from everybody. All right.
Heard cool stuff too before, so.
Yeah.
You know what, I just.
All right, let's do a motion and then a second. Motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David, this, this is a resolution, so it'll be a roll call, Laura.
Hi.
David.
Hi.
Amy.
Hi.
Myself, hi, Nicole.
Hi.
Brittany.
Hi.
And Mike.
Hi.
All right. Nine point two, confidential contracts, this is for F Y twenty-four, twenty-five, for Brooke Belka, Brian Mickelson, Eileen Munter, Jessica Brunz, and Shannon Nowak. We have a motion. Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Laura, any questions or discussion? Hearing no questions or discussion, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Nine point three, this is a F Y twenty-four contract for Mark Jordensen, um, we have a motion. So, motion by Brittany, David, you want a second? Great, is we gonna poop this snap, oh, no, he went through it with us.
Yeah, this is, uh, he's.
He's per hour, how many?
He's gonna work ninety days.
Ninety days.
Ninety days, that's right.
Okay.
And so this year he had a hundred and hundred and something, gosh.
So I thought, I wanted to feel like it was a hundred and twenty or something. I was just curious, I know we, we were trying to decreasing it, so.
Yeah, no, he's, he's in the retirement, this last year was, you know, less than he's had before, this one's gonna be less yet, we feel like we're gonna be okay. Um, John, I meant a lot about this, and John's role of construction hopefully can create enough, so we should.
Any other questions? All right, we have motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Hi.
Opposed. Motion carries. All right, policies, uh, this is the second reading of the following policies. Uh, four twenty-seven workload limits for cer- certain special education teachers, five oh one, school weapons policy. Five oh three, student attendance, five sixteen point five overdose medication. Five twenty-three policies incorporated by reference, and six oh five, alternative educational resources. We have a. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Amy, any questions or discussion?
I just, I do want to point out, uh, I did, was in contact with Val last week about five sixteen point five, the overdose medication that is required, that is also part of the legislation that's coming our way. That way it's mandatory, we already got it, uh, the one thing that her and I had talked about is training. So who needs to be trained, when can they be trained, so next fall we're ready, uh, or sooner, right, we, so. Um, she is working through that, and I shared the policy with her, so she could see what it says and what's required of it, so just wanted to give you an update on that, cause it is a brand new policy.
Brand.
Yeah, from M S B.
And you said it's at both sites, right?
It is, yes, yeah, we have it at both sites, so then it's just a matter of training, is it nurses that are trained, is it principals that are trained, is it? Yeah, okay. Where, we do, so.
Any other questions or discussion? Right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Nine point five, this is the first and only reading of the following policies. Seven ten, extracurricular transportation, seven, seven eleven, videotaping on a school bus. By seven twelve, video surveillance, seven thirteen, student activity accounting. Seven fourteen, fund balances, seven twenty, vending machines, eight oh one, equal access to school facilities, eight oh two, um I always get this word wrong, disposition of obsolete equipment, eight oh five, waste reduction and management, and my eyes are like. All right, do you have a motion? Motion by Nicole, is there a second? Second by Brittany, any questions or discussion?
Uh, if you remember from my email also talking about fund balance, uh, the one thing we talked about with the policy is to keep that the same.
Okay.
And remember, my goals for this year were to get so far and then the following, and then the next year to be back in our appliance with our ten percent, so. Just want to make sure that nobody did say anything back to me, so I'm assuming you guys will. Okay.
I'm curious, what is the policy for the vending machines?
What is the policy?
Yeah, like what, I, what, cause we don't have any, right?
We don't anymore.
We used to.
But we used to, yeah, so the only thing, um um, yeah, there were, well, it was really nothing to really discuss or change, cause the policy didn't change, um. We talked about if we should add or wanna add, one of the discussions, we talked about if we wanted to add like Gatorade or water.
Yeah.
I don't, we didn't discuss it, but the vending machine, and I'm sorry now, I haven't looked at it for two weeks, so I follow this.
I, some of it talked about, you know, board approval beforehand, which we talked about.
Yeah.
Uh, and I think some of that, so to meet the health. That's into the health requirement is for, if it's like injury.
We did, we did, so thank you for saying that, because the one thing we talked about is our stickers.
Yes.
The vending machine stickers, so that is something we're gonna finish out the year, if you had your kids asking you for every piece of change, change you have, so we are going to discuss that, so they're gonna ask again, cause there is one here, there is one in the all entry. Uh, and so that's gonna need board approval, so Brittany, thank you for saying that, that reminded me, so we're gonna let it go this year, and then we're gonna have to discuss if we're gonna approve it in the future. Um, so, that was a part of our discussion, I remember that, so thank you. Well, it's a.
Those cardboard little sleeves that give you a sticker in the middle?
Like you can get a gum ball, so it's not a vending, oh, but it's kind of a vending machine, that's what these sticker machines.
There's, there's like, yeah, you've got, you've got options, and then if you do get a plus sticker, you tend to have a three, like there is.
Yeah, where's the money going? So that is another part of that, vending machines, and so who's gonna manage it? Where's the, what's the money, you're marked for, so the board has to approve it. That was the bulk of the vending machine. Yeah.
I might add, Laura, for the vending machine we did have, we did kind of, um, fill it. Um, you know, did through concessions, the ones that was in the lobby here, but it cost so much to fix it that it was just discarded this last, right during construction, um, but we worked closely with food service to make sure it aligned with the wellness policy, it wouldn't turn on thirty minutes, um, before school started, and it turned off uh, turned back on when school got out thirty minutes later, and we tried to fill it with you know, whatever, baked glaze and all that, but of course, you'd have snickers in there, but it was on a timer. So, and it just, we stocked it out of concessions and then, um, the money just went right back into concessions, so wasn't, not that you got rich on. So.
Stickers on the other.
Yeah.
Do we have any other questions? All right, we have a motion by Nicole, second by Brittany, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Nine point six, this is E S Y contracts, this is for the summer of twenty twenty-three. Um, we're gonna, I'll just go down and read the list here, Matt Brexler, thirty-five dollars an hour up to seventy-three point five hours, twenty-five dollars an hour up to fourteen hours. Rebecca Donahue, part B teacher, thirty-five dollars an hour up to seventy-three point five hours, twenty-five dollars an hour up to fourteen hours. Um, Rochelle Gilbert, part B teacher, thirty-five dollars an hour up to fifty-eight point five hours, twenty-five oh, twenty-five dollars an hour up to eight hours. Emily Briss, part B teacher, thirty-five dollars an hour up to sixty hours, twenty-five hours up to sixteen hours. Kristen Kadri, part C teacher, thirty-five dollars an hour up to ninety hours. Um, Emily Briss, part C speech, thirty-five dollars an hour up to thirty hours. Rochelle Gilbert, part C evaluation, thirty-five dollars an hour up to ten hours. Stacy Denson, part B para seventeen thirty-four an hour up to seventy-three point five hours. Carrie Johnson, part B para seventeen thirty-four an hour up to seventy-three point five hours. Um, Kinsey, Parla, part B, part B para seventeen fifty-two an hour up to seventy-three point five hours. Angela Birkin, part B para seventeen, um, dollars and thirty-four cents an hour up to seventy-three point five hours. Carrie Avner, part B para eighteen dollars and seventy-nine dollars, seventy-nine cents an hour up to seventy-three point five hours. Alison Deliger, part B para eighteen twenty-three an hour up to twenty-four point five hours. Randy Overboll, part B para eighteen dollars and five cents an hour up to seventy-three point five hours, we have a motion. Motion by David, is there a second? Second by, any questions or discussion?
The part B, I'm sorry. Did they, what's, what's part B and what's part C? What does that mean?
One's B and one's C.
Age groups? One is birth to three and the other is three to five years.
This, again, all runs through, um, Mary Ann. Um, six, it's clear through, so Mary Ann's.
Are the job duties different for the reason there's different pays per hour or different?
Um, well, the Paris, it's where they're at in the scale.
Yeah, but.
And then the teacher, it's thirty-five, and then there's, yep, and so it's with students and without students.
Gotcha.
So for their contract, if you're working with students, it's thirty-five dollars an hour, without students, it's twenty-five, so there's work outside of student contract prepping and whatnot. So for their contract, if you're working with students, it's thirty-five dollars an hour, without students, it's twenty-five, so there's work outside of student contract dropping and whatnot.
Any further questions, discussion? All those in favor say aye. Nine point seven, this is for a non-certified contract for Tamara Cousy, her professional, um, eighteen ninety-six an hour, the start of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, school year, we have a motion. Second by Laura, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Nine point eight, non-certified contract for Jeremy Cousy, tran- transportation, nineteen dollars, ninety-six dollars, ninety, nineteen ninety-six an hour, I can't talk today. Effect July first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, you'd probably really like that. We have a motion to approve. So move Amy, is there a second? Second by David, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Nine point nine, this is a non-certified contract for Ashley Lilis, paraprofessional, seventeen eighty-six an hour, effective the certainly twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we have a motion. Motion by Laura, is there a second? Second by Nicole, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Nine point ten, this is our M S D A memorandum of understanding, it's in your back of your packet. Um, this is something that we just, uh, had to change some lan- language for legal reasons. The representatives for the M S P have already signed off on it, um, Chad's met with them, and the representation, and we're all good to go, so Amy and I signed off. And so once this is approved, we'll hand it over to them. We have a motion. Motion by David, is there a second? Second by Micah, any questions or discussion?
Sure, it's related. This was at this, at this meeting. As far as what the school would match, and, oh, not hatch, and there was some my real rules in there, that we had to comply with, so that's, was a language adjustment.
All right, um, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Motion carries. All right, next board meeting is Monday, June twelfth, six P M. in the D G F community rooms, followed by personnel committee that evening. With the conclusion, I have to ask David to run, uh, the spirit, fearless leader, leader David to run the meeting, I have college orientation with Owen that day. On dental five, so. So that's your fearless leader, I can text her, we remind them to let you know if they're not gonna make it, so make sure, okay, so. Oh, that'll be fun, good. So with different eyes, different kids.
And that day, I'm at the lake's, uh, service, cooperative, easy for me to say today. Um, the retreat. During the day, uh, but I'm done at three, so I will be driving back to that.
All right, so just make sure if anything else changes, gotta make sure we have a forum, and if the five of you are here, we're good, so. All right, anything else, team?
Um, just the meeting in Pelton, it's on June two.
June sixth, right? It's coming fast, so, yeah, that should have been my report, I should have said that, because that would be before next board meeting.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna have to, well, maybe, can, uh, yeah, two of us, so, maybe we can look whatever. Brooke, can you look and see what the next meeting would be, the end of June, and we can maybe flip whoever was meeting? The twenty-sixth, instead of doing personnel, whatever the next one in line, and just flip them. And then we won't get too in the way, is that okay? Okay, so. Figure that out. Okay? Yeah, so, five thirty-four, begins journey.